Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 10th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign up sheets in the foyer this evening. One is the sign up sheet if you're speaking at this hearing. Also, there is another one for attendees of this hearing in case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases. Please make sure you were signed up on those sheets. Our meetings be recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, and responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take a note. I also ask you to please, everybody, to please be close to the microphones this evening. And please silence your cell phones at this time. Thank you for your cooperation. On our agenda this evening, after approval of the March 27 minutes, we have one case this evening. And that is for a major subdivision number MJSB 22-0133 for the PB2 property. The action requested this evening is a review and approval of a major subdivision to convert an out parcel to Lot 11. After that, we will consider any new business followed by adjournment. This time I'll let the board members, starting with Mr. Brown, to introduce themselves.
John Brown.
Kim Summers.
Patty Robrick.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe Fazekas.
Merle Evans.
Okay, also with us this evening from Department of Land Use and Growth Management, we have their acting director Courtney Jenkins, their planner for them, welcome back Brandy Glenn, and Jessica Birch, their administrative coordinator. Also with us from the, we have our Assistant County Attorney, Mr. John Hauser. Lots going on, gotta go to page two. The Director of Public Works and Transportation, Mr. Jim Gach, from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, Kristy Hollander, from the, or Anna Wells, or both, I don't know if any of them are here this evening, from the Patuxent River Naval Air Station, their community planning liaison, Mr. Alec Young, from the Department of Economic Development, Casey Guidry, and most important is our video media producer, Ms. Amy Carter. Okay, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? From, what was it, March 27? Is there any additions, corrections? Do I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion for Mr.?
I'll second.
And a second from Mr. Brown. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? I will do roll call votes on the other, on the other hearing this evening. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving right along, we'll open our first case this evening. And that will be, as I said, for MJSB 22-0133 for the PB2 property. Owner is PB2 LLC. And their action requested, as I said before, a review and approval of a major subdivision to convert an out parcel to Lot 11. At this time, if there's anybody that's gonna be speaking and anybody from staff, I'll get everybody sworn in at this time. Stand, raise your right hand. And if you come up to speak this evening, I'll ask you if I got you sworn in earlier. Okay, do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Brandy, it's good to have you back.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
Okay.
Good evening. Agenda item one is Major Subdivision MJSB 22-0133 PB2 Property. The major subdivision plan seeks approval to convert an out parcel to Lot 11. The site is located in Mechanicsville on Friendship School Road. The land use is rural preservation. And the zoning is Rural Preservation District. Per the St. Mary's County Subdivision Ordinance, land shall be suitable for the purpose for which it is subdivided and adequate and effective, effective public facility shall be available, as determined by the Planning Commission. In addition, the public improvement shall conform to and be compatible with all other county laws, regulations, plans, programs, and standards. The decision-making responsibilities, as illustrated in Figure 20 dot 1, page 20 dash 1, the Planning Commission is the final decision-maker for both the major subdivision and adequate public facilities. The regulations of Rural Preservation Districts are intended to foster agricultural, forestry, mineral resource extraction, and aquacultural uses and protect the land base necessary to support these activities. Low-density residential development in this type of district is permitted subject to performance standards that maintain the rural character of the district in recognition of the fact that a full range of public facilities is not provided or planned. The farmer has the right to farm without being restricted by neighboring residential areas. Restricted hours of operation for farm equipment, restricted odor-producing fertilizers, or mandatory noise reduction may not be imposed on farmers in the RPD zoning district. The general intent of this district is to encourage farming without undue burden on the landowner. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in Southern Maryland News on March 24th and 31st. The property has been posted in accordance with CZO requirements, Section 21 dot 3 dot 3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 1. The agenda was posted on the website on April 3rd. The major subdivision was reviewed at the TEC meeting held on June 22nd, 2022. In the case of major subdivisions, the Planning Commission shall make the adequate public facilities determination. In making that determination, the Commission shall receive and review the Planning Director's report prepared for the major subdivision pursuant to the same standards in Section 70 dot 6 dot 1. The adequate public facilities study and other information submitted by the applicant. Upon its review of this information, the Commission shall determine if the required level of infrastructure exists or will exist to meet the standards of this chapter, and whether the approval of the proposed development will be in the public interest. This is a public hearing which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission. In order to approve the preliminary plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings. The proposed development, including lot sizes, density, access, and circulation, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable zoning standards and is compatible with the existing and/or permissible future use of adjacent property. May be served by adequate public facilities as required by Section 70 dot 2 dot 2. Sufficient number of access points for ingress and ingress are provided. Generally, two access points are required with no less than one access point for each 75 lots or fraction thereof. This lot has direct access to Friendship School Road. Public facilities are adequate in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 70 of the St. Mary's County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, adequate public facilities. Access to adjoining land is provided for in the proposed plan and will allow development of those adjoining lands in accordance with this ordinance. Street system adequacy shall be based on the street system's ability to safely accommodate trips from existing and planned land uses on the existing and proposed street system. The drainage, erosion, control, and construction proposed comply with the accepted engineering and construction practices and requirements of this ordinance. The lot block and street layout are consistent with the subdivision design standards of this and the comprehensive zoning ordinance. Adequate developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan, comprehensive zoning ordinance, and the subdivision ordinance. Per the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, also known as the SEPTIC bill, a jurisdiction may not authorize a residential major subdivision served by onsite sewage disposal systems, community sewage systems, or shared systems. If approved, the proposed Lot 11 can only be developed with non-residential uses permitted in the RPD zoning district. This concludes the staff's report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 2. Representing the applicant is Scott Burrows with Lorenzi Dodds in Gannell. Do you have any questions for me?
Same.
Brandy, I have a couple of quick questions. I've been a little confused by reading this. I mean, it looks like we are approving a major subdivision, but I thought this was already a major subdivision designated when they were gonna build in there many years ago.
So this out parcel is part of a major subdivision, but the out parcel that they're turning into Lot 11 doesn't have any development rights until it's further subdivided, and that's what you have in front of you? The proposed Lot 11?
But the Lot 11 is the whole parcel, right?
Correct.
The whole 619?
Yep, yep, that's correct. They're turning the whole thing into Lot 11.
Where's the part that's already approved as a subdivision? As a major subdivision, or it's nothing yet?
So, I don't remember the name of this subdivision.
Thiacal or thi- It used to be something many years ago, didn't it? Isn't this that property they found ordinance on?
Correct.
Many years ago?
So, a portion of that, this was a much larger piece of property.
Okay.
And it has already been turned into lots, up to Lot 10. Somewhere between 2002 and now, right?
I got you.
This out parcel, I think it's A, might be B, I don't remember off the top of my head, is the remainder, okay? It can't be developed until it's turned into a lot.
With the RPD zoning, why couldn't it be used per whatever the zoning ordinance says for RPD? It'll still have the same designation, RPD, correct?
Oh, you're not changing the zoning, that's correct.
Right.
It can, but not until you turn it into a buildable lot. It has no development rights, none. An out parcel does not have development rights until it's subdivided, until it's turned into a buildable lot. And you can only do that through the subdivision process. Often, you don't see this often, because it often happens with minor subdivisions and they don't come to you for review. This is a major subdivision. This is the only board that can approve that.
So that property, I guess I'm, how did it become an out parcel?
So, when the last subdivision was done, they didn't turn it into a buildable lot. They turned it into an out parcel, which is standard practice. It happens all the time.
Okay, so we just don't see this a lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's what I was a little confused about, of some of the wording.
Ah, I understand.
You know, major subdivision, I know it says non-residential, but then it talks about you gotta approve it for lots and roads and infrastructure and stuff like that, which, you know, kinda throws you off.
I apologize. I can do better with that next time. I can probably add, throw in some definitions and whatnot. I can expand upon, like, out parcel definitions and whatnot.
Yeah, cuz I don't think, I don't know if I've ever seen one.
I'll be more conscious of that next time I prepare a staff report. That's something that you don't see on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, no problem.
And per your last, page 15 of your report you just gave, they can have like an onsite sewage disposal system on this? In the RPD, if they were, if they were to try to build houses?
Correct, they cannot.
Okay.
They cannot do that.
And if anything was to be, I'll say, built on this after this change to this one lot, they have to revisit, they would have to come back to us anyway?
Correct.
For whatever may be on this lot?
Correct, so they can only do non-residential uses, and those uses are going to require a concept, or a major site plan, starting with the concept. So that will come to you. They'll have to come to you for concept site plan approval, which is a public hearing.
Not that this has any residential in it, but if they, if somebody did eventually wanna do residential with the RPD with, they're limited to seven houses?
They can't do it.
Can't do any?
Can't do it, can't be done. Cannot be done, because this is a major subdivision. You're not allowed to have major residential, major subdivisions on private SEPTIC.
What is it that has to be changed if it was to happen?
They need a public SEPTIC system, and-
Just to make sure that everybody knows.
And that's a lot.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Doing, sir?
How you doing?
Okay. Could you give us your name and company address, please?
Will do. My name is Scott Burrows. I'm with Lorenzi Dodds in Gannell. Company address is 3475 Leonard Town Road, Waldorf, Maryland. So, just a brief kind of history, I guess, there are some questions about the property. If you, this property back prior to 1950 was owned by Federal Ordinance Corporation and operated a munitions plant on this location. It was acquired by Thiacal Corporation around 1959. And Thiacal in the 80s, they basically raised the buildings and structures that were on the site. They harvested some timber, did some reforestation work, and also had some surveys done on the site for hazardous materials and did some remediation and cleaned up the site. There are two portions on the site, I think you probably noticed on the, on the plan as you reviewed them. Excuse me. They are restrictive covenants areas, approximately 30 acres. I think one's 32 and one's 35 acres in size. These are areas that have specific declaration of easements recorded on them that restrict uses on them. There's definitely no residential development in those specific areas, and there's no schools can be constructed. And there's specific limitations that have been recorded in the land records that are recorded in perpetuity as part of the cleanup, in addition to the other portions of the site. So then in 1999, Thiacal Corporation sold the property to South Resources Management. This company conducted the subdivision that has been done that brought us to what we have currently now with the outlot 500- A and parcel 2. Once they finished their subdivision, they conducted a major subdivision, and that's why we are still in the major subdivision process. So you had 10 lots that were created with the outlot. So this is the outlot parcel. It's approximately 619 acres. And in around 2006, the property was acquired by PB2. PB2 has entered the property into the MDE voluntary cleanup program for hazardous materials, and the site is listed as a brownfield site, MD1, 0101. So it is considered a brownfield. Site was again timbered by PB2 in the fall of 2017, 2018, and currently remains undeveloped. And it is, as was discussed, it is an outlot parcel, so it doesn't have any development rights, so to speak. So that's what brings us here tonight, is instead of just having a site that's for timber, they would like to proceed with the ability to develop the site for utility uses and potentially a solar field down the road.
Excuse me, Mr. Burrows?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, if I could. Is the 619 acres part of that brownfield you talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
What was that question again? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I asked if the 619 acres was included in what they designated as brownfield.
Okay.
Yes, the 619 acres is the brownfield site. And then on that, you have the other, the 32 and 35 acres, specific restricted areas on there.
Right, okay, thank you.
So currently, the site is primarily forested. It was clear cut in 2018 or so, except for the repairing and buffer areas. The whole site's regenerating well. Mentioned the other reserve areas. Zoned RPD, as staff mentioned. Site contains multiple streams, wetlands, and on the preliminary plan that you've received and have before you, appropriate buffers have been delineated to show both county restrictions to protect the stream repairing areas, as well as an expanded buffer to satisfy the comments that were received from the April 27th, 2022 environmental review from MDE to protect endangered species that are known to occur downstream. So we're here before you tonight to request that the out parcel be its, and I might get scorned by Assistant County Attorney, but it's more of a reclassification. You're looking at, it's, you're changing from the out parcel to to a develop a parcel, utility parcel. There is no residential development that is permitted. It will not be permitted because of, as staff mentioned, the subdivision has occurred, and due to SEPTIC bill, you cannot have additional lots on this property without a public SEPTIC system. This subdivision, which is basically not creating any additional lots, it's just converting the out parcel to a usable utility parcel, is the first step of the site's development, which is potentially for use as a major solar facility. Use 97A is a conditional use in the RPD zone, meaning that the applicant would go from here, once the plat was recorded, then they would go to the Board of Appeals to receive conditional approval for the use. Following that, or kind of concurrent with that, depending on their desires, they would be submitting concept site plan, major site plan, which would come back before this board for review and approval. And then we would go through the full development process, creating, developing stormwater management plans, sediment erosion control plans for the development of the site in the future. Strictly utility use, no residential use. As part of this process, we have prepared and submitted preliminary application for public facilities. Traffic was looked at. If the site were to be developed as a solar facility, the trips per day would be one per day at the most, so the traffic impact in the future would be minimal. And I think there were some concerns from the community about buffering. Any future development would have to satisfy buffer yards that would be required according to the zoning ordinance. So there would be buffers adjacent to any future utility or solar use that would be provided in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So that's really all I have. I can answer questions, or?
Okay.
Yes, sir?
I have a question for you, Mr. Burrows. You've referred to three or four times that if this was changed from an out parcel to a lot, a usable lot, utility use in future solar?
Yes.
But it's not strictly limited to that, is it? If this is changed, it can have any use that's allowed in the RPD, is that correct or no?
Any non-residential use, right?
Non-residential.
Right, but it's been said quite a few times by yourself that it's, you're talking about utility use in future solar, but it's not locked into that?
But you're correct. You can have more than one principal use on a property.
Right. So it, I'm saying that that's all that's been spoke about, and it doesn't, I'm just asking the question, but it's not, we're being led to, I'm not saying anything wrongly led to, but we're being told that utility solar is what's being looked at, but it's not limited to utility solar?
Correct.
Okay, and just-
You're absolutely right.
Before they do anything with this lot, though, it was said they would, if it's a conditional use, they'd have to go before the Board of Appeals.
Hang on one second, John's gonna speak to that.
Good evening, Mr. Hauser.
Evening, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, John Hauser, Assistant County Attorney, we anticipated there be a question, given that this is a slightly irregular process from what the Planning Commission typically finds it in, in that we don't have a concept site plan in front of the Planning Commission tonight. We have a request for a major subdivision. And as Mr. Van Kirk noted, and what we summarized earlier, the major subdivision, think of this in so many words, as a continuation of a subdivision begun by another developer some times ago. That, by definition, a major subdivision is any subdivision of land into seven or more child parcels. We've had 10 parcels cut off of what was the original parent parcel of this property way back when. I don't know over what time, I don't know over how large the parent parcel was, but for our purposes tonight, this is the 10th or 11th parcel to come off of that parcel, makes it a major subdivision by definition, even though there's only one parcel, not really being created tonight, just being reclassified. The 600-odd acre out parcel that's the subject of tonight remains an out parcel, because for whatever reason, prior developers did not want to go through the major subdivision analysis and application for this part of the process at that time. There could be any number of reasons for that, depending on what that developer was. Either they didn't want to, or didn't think the APF analysis could be met at the time for whatever uses they might have had in mind. They may just not have had any idea for what they wanted to use the property for, be it a residence or a non-residential use. Either way, as Mr. Van Kirk said tonight, taking it to an out parcel to a bona fide lot of record, a buildable lot of record, would allow you to put any non-residential use on the property, in theory. That non-residential use, when they go there, would still have to go through the typical concept site plan approval, and if applicable, conditional use approval, depending on the use they want to go here. The asterisk to that tonight is that we are talking about the anticipated use is a major solar energy generating facility. Those are also regulated at the state level by the Public Services Commission, state-level agency that, for about four years now, we have had a now Supreme Court of Maryland opinion saying that the state gets the ultimate say on the location of. We still go through our local process of concept site plan approval, conditional use approval, but for right now, ultimately, they will go through the application process for the certificate of public convenience and necessity. That will, at the state level, involve its own set of public hearings. The Public Services Commission will have to give quote-unquote "due consideration" to whatever findings and opinions made by the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals locally, but ultimately, it's the Public Services Commission that decides. Now, there's another asterisk to the asterisk, in that pending right now, we have about four, five hours, well, four hours and 59 minutes left of the 2023 General Assembly Legislative Session. And there is pending one bill that would not quite upend, but significantly alter that quote-unquote "due consideration" that's given to the local jurisdictions. A House version of that bill would largely take out the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals's ability to make any quote-unquote discretionary review, and it would just be a more straightforward analysis of whether buffer yards and other black and white requirements of the local code are met. And we have a Senate version that would give quote-unquote "the full power to approve or deny a permit to local jurisdictions."
You mean for solar?
For solar, only for solar. We are solely talking about solar uses in that. We don't know-
So what you're saying is that they've set it up so the rural areas can be had by the Annapolis?
I wouldn't characterize it that way myself, just because we try not to offer opinion-only analysis. But what they've done is that the state of Maryland has, at the state level, just made a decision that the state wants to head towards solar energy. Local jurisdictions and local bodies get a say. Again, they're required to give that quote-unquote "due consideration", but at the end of the day, arguably under current law, definitely under the House version, probably not under the Senate version. the Senate version, we can't exercise any sort of veto or hard stop on a solar energy facility if the Public Services Commission says it's going to go there. We've got to be taken into account. Our citizens have to be given an opportunity to be heard, but the PSC makes the call at the end of the day.
Will that even supersede the environmental regulations that are in the state?
So the Public Service Commission is required at the state level to go through their own factors and their own process. They can create their own exactions. That PSC can go in and make its own conditions. They do have environmental regulate reviews that it has to go through. We'd have to subpoena the MDE's lawyers to come down here and explain it, if you want the full disquisition on that. And even if we did, they might not come down. I want to say that might is a probably.
Well, usually it takes about a year to figure out how to come down here.
But they do go through, the CPCN process is, Mr. Burrows and the developers might be able to say it more, but it's a long process they have ahead of them in that way, in that area, with its own set of reviews. All I can say is that we have a part to play in that process, but by no means are we the deciding part of that process. And again, part of this is, we are just, I'm hitting refresh on my phone roughly every five minutes to see if they've considered SB 489 now. Part of it is, we don't know what the legal landscape is until either that bill is passed in one form or another, or we hit 1159 and it doesn't make it through this year. Then they would go under existing law, regardless of what those two bills are, which would be the Supreme Court opinion from 2019. That said, we have to statutorily make our findings and determine compliance with local regulations, but that that local determination is only a quote-unquote statutory factor to be given due consideration by the PSC.
So, John, if this moves forward, the process by which the county spent enormous amount of time and effort with this solar task force identifying where it may or may want solar, and that's why I ask about this being a brownfield, you know, when they, when that brought before the county commissioners, they identified two parcels of land, brownfields, this parcel and the parcel further in Hollywood. Are you suggesting that that work will go out the window if they decide that they, well, if it, it was always going to be, if it was too onerous, they were going to step in and take charge with regard to approval or not? So does that, all that goes away?
It doesn't go out the way completely. It's not that it doesn't mean anything, but we are reduced from being able to be, render quote-unquote "a final decision" to making ultimately what's in effect a recommendation to the public service, to the Public Services Commission.
Do you suppose, do you suppose that St. Mary's and rural counties' required percentage of solar will change because of this? You know, we, the Solar Task Force suggested that they would be, they would put them on Walmarts, K-Marts, you know, that kind of, that kind of thing. That wasn't agreed to, I guess. So do you, I mean, we have a, we have a requirement. There's a percentage that we have to provide for renewable energy, you know, and Maryland is becoming in lockstep with California. Unfortunately, Maryland's much smaller than California, you know, and has fewer dollars than California. And currently, St. Mary's County is just a tax collector for, for road taxes. We send the money someplace else. I mean, I'm, I'm, I stay, I sit here and I, I don't know what to say about some of this stuff that winds up being in the legislature, because I see it as a lot of my time, your time, and other people's time is being not completely disregarded, but substantively disregarded with regard to that, to that, to that process.
I, to answer the question as it was put, I'm not aware of any pending suggestion or reduction in our benchmark for how much solar energy we should be producing, regardless of what would happen here. I am, I will say I note and appreciate, we had two text amendments for solar energy last year. I worked on the second of them. I appreciate the thought that, again, we are being reduced to a quote-unquote "recommendation," but it does have a part to play, particularly if the law remains unchanged. And that we do go through the process here, that has to be given weight by the state agency, but ultimately doesn't control the state agency's decision.
Thanks, John.
And we're veering a little bit off, because anything that, if we approve this tonight, whatever's going to happen, we believe it could be solar, but it might be something else. We'll have to make our decision up then. I mean, this isn't a solar decision tonight.
Right.
It's just a lot decision tonight. I don't worry about Annapolis. We'll, we'll get to them when they get to the, when they get to us, so.
My only, yeah, my only question was because it had been referred to utility solar, utility solar, and I, it doesn't matter to me if it's utility solar or something else. I'm just clarifying that it doesn't have to be used for that. That's the only, only thing I was, wanted to make sure that it can be used for any, any other use that's approved in the RPD.
Correct.
Okay. The only thing I was-
Because in the RPD.
Yeah, that's the only thing I was clarifying. I'm not for or against anything. I was just asking.
And it's a big lot.
Yeah. And I'm glad that the applicant brought that forward, because that helped, you know, with, with the decision, because we were kind of walking in the blind at one time. But knowing what we can figure, one, we know it's not going to be residential. I think that was one of the biggest parts of the letters that we got from, any public, public input had a lot to do with the home. So we know that, that's off of the table. So now we're getting down to what might go on there. You've given us a pretty good hint of what's going on, what will go into there, but you're still going to have to come back and see us before that happens.
Yes, I would say, as corrected, any major site plan's going to come back before this board, regardless of what you're-
This week.
That's all I was going to-
A solar.
That's all I was going to add to the discussion just had, is that, well, even solar would at least get public hearings, even if that decision is a recommendation. But I was going to say, for the public's benefit, that no matter what sort of non-residential use gets put on the property, it's going to head to at least a concept site plan. And if it's going to be solar in particular, that's going to be at least two public hearings, one before either the Planning Commission or the Board of Appeals, depending on the way that law shakes, and at least one public hearing before the Public Services Commission. Likely, likely, it could be for at least three public hearings and go before both the Planning Commission, the Board of Appeals, and the PSC.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. At this time, we'll open it up to public testimony. I do have the sign-in sheet. I have one person on here that would like to speak, and that would be Brandon Hall. Could you give us your name and address, please, sir?
Brandon Hall, 41901 Windward Way, Hollywood, Maryland. Quickly, this may be a premature comment, but it's really directed to the potential future use. Before I get into that, one quick question. We mentioned earlier that maybe we didn't have the ability to further subdivide with the septic law. So would the, I guess my question would be, would that rural preservation district use be limited to uses that don't require septic systems?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
So they're allowed to have a septic system. The, the septic bill is just for resident, major residential subdivisions. Yeah, so you can have a septic system for non-residential.
Gotcha. Okay. And then the other, the other, I guess my testimony is, we've talked a lot about the state and the county, and one thing I've noticed recently is the federal government, you know, the Fish and Wildlife Service is looking to expand wildlife refuges down into the southern Maryland counties, including St. Mary's, Calvert, and Charles, looking for 30,000 acres of expansion. If you actually look at their draft of where they like these wildlife refuges to be, this, this lot is directly in the center of what they consider environment that's, you know, worth preserving. So I understand the, the Solar Task Force recommendation to look at brownfield sites. I just don't know if this particular site, in my opinion, is the best use of the land, given the watershed. And when the property was cleared in 2017, 2018, I would just encourage a lot of scrutiny for the stormwater management. I know in the summer of 2018, we had multiple flooding events downstream. One of our friend's houses were severely impacted, and that just happened to coincide with the 600 acres of trees being cut down. I don't know if it's related, but I really ask that this board and future boards apply a lot of scrutiny to the stormwater management plan, if the solar does move forward. I'm a big supporter of renewable energy. I think solar's great. I just worry that we're really trying to thread a needle here between protecting the development district in Leonardtown, property owners along Maypole Road, and, you know, it'll be cut off all the water. We've got a lot of endangered and threatened species in that watershed that depend on a certain level of water flowing through that property. So it's probably a premature comment, but there's a lot of moving pieces here, especially with the federal government. So I would just encourage the county to, and the developers and, and the owners, to keep their options open. You know, maybe this is a situation where we look at, at options for a land swap or preservation, something like that, because it's, it's going to be a challenging site to develop without putting, it's potential. All right. Thank you very much.
Hold on for a second. Does anybody got any questions? Mr. Hall? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Was there anybody else that'd like to get up and speak? Could you come up to the microphone, please?
She was warning him.
I will have to swear.
I didn't have my name on there. I was going to talk, but I do have a question. My name is York.
Okay. Before you start, let me, let me swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? And do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Could you give us your name, please?
Okay. It's Kathy York.
Okay. Could you give us your address, too, please?
25540 Friendship School Road, Mechanicsville, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am.
So my question is, in years past, when they tried to make changes to this property and do some developing, conditional use was a racetrack that came up. And I'm just wondering if you folks opened up this parcel and the solar does not come through, is a racetrack still conditional use of that property?
Give me one second.
She's going to give you a number.
Yes, ma'am.
It is. So if the property is not, if you do not give permission tonight for them to have it be an out parcel, or I don't know all these terms, we can't have a racetrack. Is that correct?
So not only is it a conditional use, they still have to come in with a major site plan and go through the concept process, so you'd have a public hearing if somebody wanted a racetrack?
And I don't understand all the sewage stuff, but is the sewage stuff going to be good for a racetrack?
They'd have to have a septic system.
Okay.
But I can't really speak about that without a site plan for a racetrack.
Okay. Well, I guess that answers the question. Thank you.
Did anybody else have any questions, Ms. York? Okay. Amy, if you can hear me, too, I've, I got a text that said they can't hear any of the public testimony of being broadcast over the, over the television. So could you make sure that that one, that mic is, it's working in this room?
The mic is working. People need to be closer to the microphone.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. You heard the voice from above. Get close to that mic. That includes-
The author's spoken?
That includes the board. That's why I said she's the most important, because she can do that. Board members, please speak closer to your mic when you go. Is there anybody else that wanted to say anything? Could you come up? Let me go ahead and swear you in, then I'll get your, your information. Raise your right hand. And do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could I get your name and address, please?
Kyle Welch, Top Run Court in Hollywood. It's not really a question. I'm just-
Could you point that mic up a little bit to you? There you go.
It's not really a question. I'm just reminding everybody that this is a developer, and I think a solar, I'm in favor of renewable energy and all that. I think it's great. But if it doesn't work, it could also be something else. And just reminding everybody, it's a developer, so not saying that I don't trust them, but it could be turned into anything else. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Hold on one second. Anybody having? The one good thing about that, though, is no matter what they do on that lot, they got to come back and see us. They got to see at least one board, if not two boards. And if it's solar, it's going to be three boards, from what I understand. So we're, we're going to hear more about it. Okay. Anybody else? Going once, twice? Okay. Three times. All right. I'll go ahead and close the public testimony. Mr. Burrows, was there anything else you wanted to add after you heard the comments? Any? Okay. I'll open it up to the board for deliberation. Mr. Fazekas?
So I, I just kind of, you know, find it funny, you know, if I owned residential property that was zoned residential, and if I wanted to build it, per the regulations in the county, I'd have those rights. But this particular property somehow fell through the cracks, and the owner doesn't have any rights other than, you know, cutting down the logs and potentially causing environmental damage every so many years when they do that. As, as a property rights point of view, I think everyone has a right to use their land to whatever, you know, they're allowed to do. So it's almost like a no-brainer right now that the owner of this property has the rights to do something with it. Now, what they end up doing, that's going to come back to us when they are ready to do something, and that's when we can have those bigger discussions. But I think when we're just talking about, you know, does somebody have the right to use their property, I think it's, it's a no-brainer. That's all I have to say.
Anybody, anybody else have any comments?
I fundamentally agree. And the reason I asked the question, I just wanted to make sure that we all knew, and the public knew, that they wasn't limited to solar and utility. You know, we've kind of been steered there, that it was going to be that, but I just wanted everybody to know, it doesn't have to be. And I believe, like Mr. Fazekas believes, if you own a property, you should have the right to develop it, to whatever the zoning is. And to answer Mr. Welch's question, that's what it would be. It would be within the legal zoning of RPD, which is, I'm assuming, fairly broad. I didn't even know they could have a racetrack, but I wouldn't assume they would have a racetrack there, but I didn't even realize that was part of the, the, um, the talk. But just, it would, like I say, it would be, if you ever wanted to, you ever board one night, look up what they could build in the RPD, you know, in, within the county website, and it'll kind of answer what all they could have there, some commercial. Limited and, you know, different things. But hopefully, it'll be like they're trying to do the solar, so.
Let's be close to the mic, sir. Your name came up in the text, too. They couldn't hear you.
I didn't say anything.
A little while ago.
So I agree. I, I mean, folks have property rights. We all do. You have a right to do something with the property that you own, and I, and I understand that. This particular large parcel has been struggling for decades to find a use. And there are people in the audience that have spent a lot of time trying to figure, trying to figure this mess out. It sits at the headwaters of McIntosh. That water all flows downhill. And there's been talk over the years about trying to find some sort of impoundment area, a lake or something like they do, you know, at St. Mary's, for example. If it weren't for St. Mary's Lake, Great Mills would continue to flood. But because of that lake, it doesn't. And I'm not saying that, that this is an appropriate place to put something like that, but it's certainly a thought. Mr. Hall, if you have some inroads with United States government, the United States government seems to have more money than it knows what to do with. Every time I turn around, it's buying something. Maybe if they would reach out to the developers and the owners of this property, they could find a use, some use for some of that money. Maybe they would like to be the proud owners of this parcel that you seem to see fall in the footprint of what they'd like to preserve. And I say that sort of tongue-in-cheek, but it is what it is. It's not, not such a bad idea to do that. But back to these previous gentlemen, people have, we have certain rights on, for properties. And we've talked some tonight about solar. And when it comes back, I would expect that we'll maybe talk again. What if we don't? This board and others will probably be delving more deeply into the, into the use. There are 129 possibilities, I think, that are non-residential. But again, these folks have a, have a right to do something with their, with their, with the land they have. You have a right to attend public hearings and to voice an opinion and voice, doesn't have to be a negative opinion. If you, if you have something to say, something's-
If you have something to say, something positive, great, Mr. Hall, good. You know, he's talking about how the government would like to buy that piece of property. So anyway, I think that moving forward, I don't, I don't have a problem. Well, I have a concern. I mean, it's a big, it's a big lot. 609 acres is a big lot. And there are lots that could go on with that. But I just don't see, I mean, I don't have the ability to, to say no, I don't think, in this case, so.
Anybody else? Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion. We know where, I believe we know which way we're going. Anybody like to do so?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. In the matter of major subdivision, MJSB 22-0133, PB 2, having accepted a staff report and having made a finding that the criteria for approval of a preliminary plan, section 30.5.4 of the subdivision ordinance, have been met, and noting that the reference project has met all requirements for preliminary plan approval, I move that major subdivision be approved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second, something, okay. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Fazekas?
Aye.
Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Robrecht?
Aye.
Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And also vote aye. Okay. First step is down. Hope to see you not too soon, but soon. Okay, thank you. And thank you all for coming out. Hopefully, the information will flow on and then the community will stay informed. If there's no other business this evening, anybody got anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.